I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you give approval of the agenda?
So.
All right, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Would anybody like to address council? Okay, consent to agenda. Approval of minutes, approval of bills, purchase orders, approval of investments, two gambling resolutions, resolution 2017-27, number zero two for Congress, resolution 2017-28 for the new lines, Embry on sale three two mall, their career license, case officer, make that step increase, EMT appointment, please chief mouse step increase, can you get motion to approve?
So. Sorry.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Both, motion carried, reports, general fund first quarter financial, Tesla?
Alright, so we have the first quarter of the year. General fund revenues are looking really well, which is always the case. We get most of our money in January, December from both property taxes and our local government pay. The expenditures are also low, at about fifteen percent. The insurance are low across all departments, and this is from workers comp gets paid in April versus first quarter for monthly. And also overall health insurance is under because we budget all employees at the family plan and all those. Office equipment, the equipment and maintenance is slightly higher. We got to get a new server and upgrade our office three sixty-five that we were anticipating for that rate of cost of it. And also our set aside transfers brought the general fund that we put to our capital improvement fund. Those are some who are twice here, so that will be documented as well. Then when I kind of looked at different departments to see where they're at, they're all pretty close. Streets are lower for their expenditures, just because at this point more time has been spent on stolen ice versus streets. Overall, everything is looking pretty close. For MATA, here you'll notice there was a huge variance. Expenses have well exceeded the budget, and this is just due to professional services time relating to various big projects going on that we didn't have put into our budget for the year. We're hoping that with state grant proceeds, we get some hand of TIF that we'll be able to repay back this month, but that will be over a few years. Ambulance looks like it's right on track. Revenues are at twenty-six percent, so our charges are right where we expect them to be. Expenditures are a little low at eighteen percent. In the first quarter, the ambulance charged off eight thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars, and they got two thousand four hundred ninety-seven back through what you can see. By your department, this fund also throughout the year looks low because most of the activity is done at year end. The revenue from our townships and the cities come at the end of the year, and also our salaries are paid at the end of the year. Special revenue funds are fairly low, there's just not a lot of activity at this point. Our capital project fund again are low because we haven't started any projects, so I anticipate most of those lost during some of months. And death service, we haven't received any money. Again, that all comes from our property taxes, and we are at ninety-five percent of budget, just because all of the payments have been made, except for one more interest payment that'll be in July. So overall, there hasn't been a lot of activity in the first quarter, but it's where we anticipate. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Police department should be reporting. Chief Mouse?
Good evening. Here for twenty seventeen, we had full nine site heat issues, reported two verbal warnings, zero ripings. Twenty seventeen may receive two hundred forty-one calls or requests for service. Last year we had four hundred and fifty, and then on ICR ten thirteen, and last year was thirteen eighty-two. The big discrepancy there is we did ordinance violations starting in May this year instead of in April. Nice thing that I am seeing with the ordinance violations, we are we now. So some of the properties we've had minor issues within the past, taken care of already. Some properties we had major issues within the past are pretty well taken care of as well as the ordinance we had through like last year or this year, so we should have a lower year overall. That's our hope anyway. Overall, we are at twenty-nine agency assists in common, down two hundred nine calls for the month, but because of the ordinance related things, and three hundred sixty-nine down for the year, which will be adjusted here in May. One area that we're still working on or waiting on is Rose Park, the Mouse community storage shed on the south side of Craft Drive there. We have some time to take down right around June second, third will be its final days. And we should give us an remedy, which doesn't appear, it will be, will be going for before this turns coming down. It's getting a order from them to move on that one. That should be the last one still pending from last year's ordinance related things, and we should be fresh on twenty seventeen then. Animal licenses are due by the end of the month, so anybody that hasn't gotten one yet, trouble having to say either one of the late fees. And officer greeting started this week, slipped right over there, so we're slowly getting broken. Any hasn't run out from us yet, so we'll see though, there's still time.
Not related to the police department, but to the public works department is that Gary and his crew are actively citing individuals for longer grass. So if I don't mow my lawn tonight, I'll be getting my own letter, so we will be taking care of that tonight. But Gary and the crew are really working on that, and you'll be getting a couple of actions before you have an next council meeting to mitigate those nuisances.
And this is Police Officer Memorial Week?
Yes, that runs Sunday through Saturday, so this week we'll be honoring the officers that have lost their lives in line of duty. So we honor them all week over in our morning.
Morning badge?
Or black badge, stretch over our badge, so. Was killed in line of duty here in Mouse back in nineteen nineteen at one gates, so we make sure we get the special members here.
Well, thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
And welcome to Police Department.
Thank you. Planning and zoning commission meeting?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Planning and zoning had several different items on their agenda for the May first meeting. Two CUPs and one variance were reviewed and recommended. All three of those items are going to be on tonight's agenda. Planning and zoning also addressed the land purchase for the East Substation, and they found that it did the purchase and the used station quite good, not least the claim. Also, planning and zoning reviewed and recommended ordinance that addresses storage units. However, editing, reviewing, placement for that ordinance still has to be done, and me and Scott are going to work on that. Also along with that, nuisance letters for commercial and industrial properties that we've been getting complaints about will start going out in the comments. Any questions?
Alright. ID, city attorney in North Court, Scott?
Good evening. As you can see, there's a lot going on heading towards us at the moment. The CHOT's program is continuing to see, we talked about this D E P I, that's related to the D grant that we received, profiling up on paper work, now it's costing teams, getting that filed so that we can get those ones. I think we've got another resolution on that later this evening. We also are, we're gonna get a environmental assessment worksheet in place for this project, and so we're working on that as well. You'll also see down below that it's twenty-five years I've never had to worry about an environmental assessment worksheet. I think I potentially too. The other one is with the plans coming out on St. Mary's Church, make it to do one to fit then go forward with the plan. The middle of the project, that is coming up, and I'll talk about that some more. Finally, hopefully draw that one to a close in next month. And then finally, just kind of general, you know, zoning and subdivision issues. Director Krueger mentioned that you have three of them here before you later. There's been some other possibilities coming up as well that we've been looking at to see how they're gonna fit under our guidelines. Part of this will be coming up in the order deal entering the meeting, but if you've got any questions, happy to try to answer, or just stand here and tell them.
We do a good job at that.
But nothing they did.
Alright, we're on to action items. Six A, Leestone Conditional Use Permit Resolution Number twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight, Mike?
At the May first Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, one of the items was the conditional use permit for Leestone. Leestone is planning on expanding their existing facility. They're planning on expanding their warehousing facility to the south in a three-phase project. And so public hearings held, and the CUP was received to accommodate the expansion of the warehouse. Due to the fact that a CUP was granted for this property in two thousand seven, one of the stipulations on that CUP was that use could have to be expanded without getting the permit. That's why we're here tonight. As far as that project, the following stipulations were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. One, this use may be expanded without securing a new permit as long as the facility is within the footprint of the proposed site land that was provided. Phase number two, phase one, the new site land for this permit must be utilized one year from the date hereof, or the permit shall refer to two thousand seven permit. Future phases do not require timeline. Number three, all lighting shall be directed towards the ground and away from adjacent properties. Number four, parking lot shall be constructed of durable material. Example of durable material, glass, vinyl, handchips, pavement, cement, and other similar material. Five, all four, all four existing lots must be merged into one lot before building apartments.
Question, Mike?
Yes.
You said durable surface. That's not how it's defined in the ordinance.
Yeah, that's true. And I looked into that. In our ordinance, it's defined as pavement, cement, or papers, or.
And specifically excluding class five and gravel?
Yes. And this was actually, this language was actually pulled off of a CUP that was on last year.
So part of the conditional use is.
Allowing.
Non-durable surface.
Correct.
I think to clarify that, I think very easily what the site actually right now for the Leestone site is all basically, it is, it's tar right now. And so we'll have that conversation with David and his crew out there to make sure that they understand what that current standard is, which is the tar or cement, I believe is the durable surface as it's defined.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure that that gets done. And he's aware of that because he already meets the standard already for durable surface. Alright, so the council to consider approval of the denial of conditional use permit as presented and recommend by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'm looking for, is there any discussion, any comments?
Tony, anything to add?
No, we discussed a number of concerns, and they were all defensive actually, but quite a ton. I don't have any concerns with the project that's similar to the last conditional use permits.
Motion?
Can you get a second?
Sorry.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Alright, both, motion carried.
Can I ask a question? So am I approving it as it's written with the, as it's written?
With that one, with the one correction, it says durable surface, so which is, which is defined in the, in our zoning code.
Me, Leestone variance resolution for twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine.
Another item we had at the Planning and Zoning Commission was variance for this same project for Leestone. Public hearing was held, and there was no comment made for that. And again, the expansion of the warehouse is going to be to the south. The variance applies to setbacks for the east, east side setbacks, as well as structural lot coverage. In our ordinance, structural lot coverage is forty percent of the lot in C two zone can be covered by structure. However, with the addition that Leestone is planning, it will be closer to fifty percent. And so that's the recommendation, as well as the setbacks for the existing facility. They got a variance so that they could be fifteen feet from the right way. And so this variance would also allow the expansion to match that, so that they're aligned up on the side. And it should be noted that conversations have been had about getting variance next month or height variance. However, I've not heard any additional word on what height they're looking at. So at this point, there is no height variance.
Again, anybody else have any questions?
Just a general question. Scott, the mixed use that we have between the veterinarian on the same property and retail and industry that we have on the other property, the numerous conditional uses and variances, would it make sense to have this whole thing in B U D?
You know, I wouldn't.
For looking back, no, we shouldn't have it.
Looking back, but I, I seem like I just started.
Too many.
Time sheets had, had no idea where they were going.
If you had any inkling that all this was gonna happen.
Yeah. Fair enough. It'd be hindsight.
Okay. What is the height restriction at this point for?
In our ordinance, it's forty.
Forty, okay. Was this current facility?
It's, I'm not sure what the height is. I believe it's hovering.
Alright, can you get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. See, first auto conditional use permit resolution number twenty seventeen dash thirty.
Again, another CUP was addressed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Public hearing was held, no public comment was heard. And at the Planning and Zoning meeting, the CUP was recommended with the following conditions. Also, there was another issue that I'm gonna address after the conditions. So the following conditions are, one, this use may not be changed or expanded without securing the permit. Two, this permit must be utilized one year from the date hereof or terminated. Three, the developer must construct the project in accordance with all documents, plans, and information presented to the city as part of the permit. Four, all lighting shall be directed towards the ground and away from the residential properties. Five, parking lot shall be constructed of durable material. Example of durable material, class five, granite chips, pavement, cement, or other similar material. Six, ingress egress to the property shall be constructed of tar or cement at a width equal to the ingress and egress, and at a minimum length of eight feet into the property. Seven, exterior dumpster shall be sprayed by a fence that is at a minimum of seventy-five percent of previous level. And the additional concern that came up had to do with ingress egress. On this particular property, there are two ingress egresses, one's further to the east side, and the other one's further to the west. East side ingress egress is actually closer to the intersection of Second Avenue and Country Club Road. With my, started doing some digging, talking to several different people, whether it be county engineers, I spoke to Craig, I spoke to Gary Finn Dorff, and we came to the consensus that the ingress egresses are actually, they're not safety concern by any means, so leaving as is should not make the issue. That's just a recommendation, so. But the Planning and Zoning did ask that the council give that some thought.
So it's not like Casey's where it's one two-monocurved from the intersection back five feet?
Yeah, there's two separate ingress.
To me, that is a safety issue. If you come from the west to the east, if you're coming out of that intersection, they don't see you or care, and they're just, they're always forever cutting. So that is a problem, but if you're doing two segments, it's great.
Alright, is there any other?
Just reading through this, it looks like the couple is changed to address that issue. So is that what we, talking about closing the east ingress and widening the western ingress will improve the traffic flow and the safety aspect?
Already talked about the resolution?
Yeah, the resolution has been amended, so is that, is it?
That I would actually leave as what, as it was. Yeah, I changed it, and then after talking to the engineers, Craig, and then we came to the consensus that it was actually fine as a consent.
I don't know if Joe's, he was okay with like putting a sign up saying in and out?
Yep.
Because one, close to the intersection, I consider that'll be, I'm just traveling through there so much with all the Casey's traffic and western traffic and returning on there. If you're exiting that property through that ingress by close to the intersection, it could be, could be somewhat of a concern. I'll add.
Sure, you'll have a stacking issue anyway.
Yeah.
And that was actually the point that Craig brought in as well, was if the east ingress egress could be used specifically for entrance and no exiting?
Right.
Specifically for that, that's an easy thing to solve. Yep.
Okay. Does the resolution from the council have to be modified to say that it's okay to have two?
I believe we would. Those changes.
Now are you planning to address the same questions before the technical service?
You've agreed as it is, of course. And just to be clear too, he has, as per the ordinance regulations, he has up to a year to do that as well, so. And he's aware of it.
I have a little question on that, yes. So then it's saying that I do have to tar that yard, yard within one year, is what the ordinance showed. And that's enough triple my property tax.
Ask hold the line. I can't speak to that, I don't know what the valuation is gonna be at.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I've had conversations with the Commonwealth and text amongst the others.
That's what it's gonna come down to for me, I guess, as far as if it literally is going to stop. That interstate service center's got roughly the same size lot. He said it was gonna up his taxes like ten thousand dollars a year if he tars that. And if it's gonna cost me an additional ten thousand dollars a year, you know, tar. I mean, obviously I want to tar, but if I'm paying ten thousand dollars a year to have it there, then I don't know. I think it's gonna hurt for me.
Upping an area is involved?
So them two lots, I guess I don't know the exact measurements of it. We tried calling Sterns County today, you know, because then they'd be able to give you an exact number or whatever, but he was out of office, I don't know right there.
But you're saying your taxes would go up ten thousand dollars because you spent twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand to tar your driveway?
I'm just going off what Scott Postman had said, because that's what he, he looked into doing it, and that's what he said was gonna jump his up.
The lot measurement as a whole is somewhere just, just under a degree directly. But the, from the size of the building where Joe plans on paving is probably over half meter.
So is that something new from when Scott built? So why is Scott's all gonna be gravel? And all this, I mean, is that, is that a move?
That was, I built, without, again, I can't speak to it specifically, but I believe that was, I minded when we adopted the new planning and zoning regulation here about two years ago, after looking at it. And there was a couple of other things that were addressed in there, like some fencing issues that we clarified, but this pavement was one of those things that was required for all C two districts. Again, that's when Gary was.
Dig through the files.
Because that's, that's a big change.
And reform surface to be, is this what you had?
Specific definition is cement, tar.
Definitely. Get that all. Check out exactly what that is. It's asphalt, which is asphalt. What is this thing that says?
That's what it says.
Right, it says tar, cement, or papers, that's what you're saying, right?
That's what it says. I haven't looked at that yet, that's your rules, but yeah.
So what we can do though is if the council and commission feels appropriate, we can always bring that particular topic back to them. We had a conversation with the board chair about this issue or concern, and from the planning commission, he says if it's directed, we'll review it again. If that's a consensus, we can do that, or we can just continue on our way to zones.
I think in order for you to get your planning, you need this approved.
Correct.
I mean, that's, yeah, Kramer can't order for us until we got the go-ahead.
Well, the conditional use is to allow, is to allow an auto facility.
Right.
In this district, that's all we're being asked right now.
Right.
So if there needs to be a variance, that's a whole subject.
Yeah, or if this durable surface is too big of an issue, then we have to look at our codes to zoning markets to see whether or not it's too onerous, problematic on this type of facility. And not sure that we'll ever.
So like what Councilmember T. Schaefer was referencing tonight, it's still appropriate for the council to take action.
Right.
With the conditional use permit as presented, and or if there's modifications to the actual zoning ordinance, we can do that. But it just gives you, gives the applicant an opportunity to, to evaluate what those conditions are as for the, as for the rules as they currently are.
Want to get motion to approve the conditional use permit? I'll sorry.
Your first and second, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. The bill for land purchase?
Yeah, this, I hope you said it now, and this was before you, last year, about this time. And the agreement was signed, but work hasn't started, and we never proposed on it. And in the intro, a couple of things had come up. We were always going to modify the location of the driveway. There's a driveway there, right now we don't hold that. But we were sharing the driveway with Will, by this, with the chief, so we were gonna change the driveway, and I guess now Will's gonna hold property. We're the ones using the driveway into our property to the south. So we were modifying the size and location of the driveway a little bit with dividing our current property kind of in half. So we've got a front piece and a southern piece establishing a boundary line. We were always going to take the utility easement along that boundary line, and we're still going to do that. Along the west boundary of the lot, it's planted property, so there was already a dedicated utility easement. And going forward with our, what do we need for the utility easements in light of the general project, we determined that we need. We determined that we need workspace along that, that corridor to get the, the increased utilities in there. So we're modifying the utility easements that the city is making, that we sell it to, how they do some of the answer requirements. And then there was just kind of a question, you know, if you said you were going to close a year ago June, and you still have to close June, you still have an agreement? Or it was canceled? And so, and then another item that came up is grading, and really going to get the dirt, and do some other stormwater planning. So some of the, it helps our lots, my understanding, both, we have both lots, so some dirt from the property, a lot of the city's, they're retaining. We'll get used to help him do some, some grading on his lot. So there's several changes, and it's signs that were just possible, and then we made so long. And so I thought it better to go forward and just get all these changes in grade, and get them approved by the council, sign a new agreement, and then we'll just. Oh, we're here, go, say, we're going to close this the next month, and that's what, what we're coming to, is that we want to get this done in the next, next month. So I provided, you know, a red line to illustrate the changes. And if you look, I say, oh, most of it is just taking out stuff that's not current anymore, changing some dates. We've got some additional language about the stormwater improvements. And then the big changes are in the easement, particularly the reservation or utility easement, so that we're, we're keeping our. But I think they're significant enough that we just want to just make those changes and close it, but come back to the council and continue.
Did you have an expiration date or a termination date to the agreement?
We are.
We all hope that it doesn't come to fruition, that we would need it, you know, but.
Yeah, we've got a closing date, I've got the agreement due, as of today, with a closing date of June 16th, we were going to give him thirty days, but then it fell on a, on a Sunday. So I went back to Friday for it. This has been sent to his, the Will's attorney, look at, they wanted some good language about the stormwater improvements. Otherwise, they've seen this, and they have an object that holds a day, so. Certainly had long enough to.
And if I may, if I may, Scott, this in addition to that, the, there's nothing changing with the conditional use permit for adjacent property owners. There will be a berm, there will be a heat foot fence on top of that berm, a couple of ten-foot buffer. There will be a building located there, maybe later this fall for construction, maybe even next spring, but that's, everything is good. The engineers have looked at this every which way and sideways, the city's engineers, well as Will's engineers, and so they feel that they have a satisfactory stormwater retention of this drainage plan to address that.
Two questions, Mike, the developers agreement or the land sale agreement has, you asked about, right? Second, the conditional use permit, did it have an expiration date of one year?
It does, it expires in July, however, there's an administrative process where you can ask for a six-month extension.
Question, so yes, should we ask him to approve the, the, the restated agreement that then authorize city officials to sign this certain, what was the transaction?
Wait, motion.
Give me a second.
I'm sorry.
There's a eye?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Thanks, Scott.
Mike, I hate to interrupt, but can I go back to the other one, just for my meeting minutes for clarification on this resolution that Josh, I mean, so am I supposed to be revising the ingress and egress and also? I don't want to, you know, get this guy hung up on technicalities on my meeting minutes here. So there was an ingress and egress discussion, right, am I correct, Tony, so that has to be revised, correct?
Go back to, delete what the original?
The planning and zoning, whatever that, and I don't have that in front of me, but that's what you want to reflect, and also, and then what about the material, is he?
It'll, it'll just, it'll just say durable material, which is defined within the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Which is, that's something that's tar.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
No, no, it's a good question, it's a very special case.
Thank you.
Grass, can you notice a nuisance?
Um, you had an issue with the grass in one of the properties. Last year already, we had some complaints, and I properly talked to the person, and it's difficult to get it taken care of. So this year again, we had three complaints from various neighbors of multiple houses. I talked to the resident again last Thursday, he said he was worried about that evening. He sent in a certified letter, and I believe he received it this Monday. He did cut probably two-thirds of the grass. When I measured it, was it Monday or Tuesday, it was at places eighteen inches tall. Get a couple fours of it, and it just rolled by his neck for a minute, and there's still probably a girdle that's not cut. So I guess, just looking, we have a destruction order available, and the council also want to consider for that residence. So we would not have to constantly go after this person, and I believe last year, or the neighbor's got it a lot, a lot of the year, so she would have to look at it.
So, is it the same with last year?
Yeah, you have that, just in your.
Yeah, I don't remember if it was the same with last year.
Uh, no, no, that one actually, we got it over yesterday, and it was cut today.
Okay.
So I think that one, we did a destruction order on, but last year after we did that, it was taken care of the rest of the year.
And then we, yeah, so we put a destruction order on this one, it'll go to full year till?
If we do this one, it'll be good till next year this year, with the way the orders was changed.
And only gets implemented if they do not take care of it?
Yes. Yeah, from Monday, I believe they have seven days from the certified tender to take action.
But it's valid, like a month from now, if it's eighteen inches thick, then you can just.
You can do it.
Eight inches, yes.
Or eight inches, okay.
Eight inches, okay. Is everybody okay with that? All right, can you get a motion through, please?
Take a motion.
Give me a second. There's a eye?
Aye.
Thanks, Gary. Good business. Very mental assessment worksheet.
Yes, I'll touch on this one, Gary. There's a required mandate under Minnesota state's state law that if a building is within a four-class city, which the city of Melrose is, and if the property is more than two-hundred thousand square feet in regards to physical plant structure, it is a mandated environmental assessment worksheet. What that is, it's a determination that, that an assessment was completed, and it's, it's an administrative process, it's a very burdensome, very costly project to go through. But the ultimate decision will come back to the municipality here to determine if an environmental impact statement is determined. We do not anticipate a recommendation coming from staff to do that. It's very unlikely that that will ever occur. The reason is that environmental impact statements are only for the, you know, salt, ore mines, and airports, and things of that nature that actually do that. So we, Genial Turkey is actively working on an application to do that. The city of Melrose is actively working with them to facilitate that. However, with this, there is some very technical areas that staff needs some assistance with to make sure that nothing gets missed. Therefore, I've reached out to SEH Engineering to help us with the environmental side of this. They've given me a contract for that today in the amount of five thousand dollars to do the review of the final report, as well as to make a determination for this. The reason they were selected is because there already are water, wastewater for the, for the Genial Turkey project, and they have a pretty deep bench for that, so. I reached out to them, and they've already started to do that. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, that I've contracted that help, it is within the threshold for contracting staff to do that up to ten thousand dollars, and this is five thousand dollars. So we do anticipate a special council meeting within thirty-two days after the notification is sent out for the environmental quality board review and public comments. So we don't know when that will be, we're hoping within the next sixty days we'll have that meeting, so we can move on to the next step. So no action required of the council.
Okay. Our business resolution number twenty seventeen dash thirty-one.
The city of Melrose is contracting with Ryan Consulting to assist us with a deed application to fund nearly a million dollars worth of public improvements for water, sewer, as well as the electric storm, electric feeders from the substation. In accordance to that, we need to pass additional resolution, which Tracy wasn't aware of before, which she gave us the original resolution. The council and the commission have both passed resolutions to support the grant already, however, we need to have a clarifying dollar amount to meet the deed requirements after further review. So the commission will be paying these dollars, this is a pass-through from the commission to the city. So, but the council needs to approve the resolution as we've done in the past.
And again, a motion to approve.
Put a motion.
Second?
Second.
On there's a eye?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Engineering, planning, WSB, associations.
This was a conversation, this is spurred by myself. I'm trying to be proactive with, with the city here, because we have several projects that are outstanding. We have projects that are contingent on bonding bill and tax bill. And so what I'm asking permission for from the council, because we're going to be very uncomfortable in regards to timing to do First Street, Craft Wall, retaining lot, Four Hundred Lot, Fifth Avenue, all these other projects, if we move forward with these projects. And so what I, what I'm proposing is that if a tax bill and a bonding bill passes, we would then request WSB to give us an engineering estimate to, to do the plant, plant work, as well as an engineering estimate to do the design work for us. And really, that's what that is. It's a, if this happens, then we can go ahead and get a quote for what the planning and engineering will cost us to do. You're not approving it tonight, that you're moving forward with it, it's to tell Mike and his team to put together a solid cost estimate to do the design and the, and the, as written in the, in the agenda. So that's, that's my presentation, so.
Well, I guess, you know, might be kicking my, bringing my long-term idea up here of, you know, I agree that we should think of this as a big master plan. Over the, the old idea to push the bridge north, you know, because there is so much room there along that, the old dam wall. The wall, south of the dam, where the water comes over. There's a lot of, a lot of room there to create a, a nice slope, a usable slope, a green slope, restore the natural river flow to a, to a, go straight over the dam and under the bridge, push the bridge north. We have allocated, we have found out that fixing the retaining wall, the way it stands today, will cost two-hundred fifty, three-hundred thousand dollars. I think the big hang-up with pushing bridge north before was permitting for getting the, basically the river channel redoubted. But looking at permitting, that went into the retaining wall, it didn't seem like it was that onerous to do that. Seems a lot more feasible, talking to the DNR, I can remember it was last name Ryan with the DNR, when we talked about retaining wall, he said, oh yeah, let me mention that idea of breaking the river, straighten the river out, over the dam. So all that by, by far, the preferable method to, to address the river flow and retaining. I believe it was grant, when you go restoring natural river shoreline, Sterns County soil and water, getting help with that. The other benefit to go along with pushing bridge north is the distance between Main Street and First Street could potentially be lengthened by pushing First Street north. That would open up more space again, the business is also potentially allowing truck traffic, bus traffic, coming from the north and turn right on First Street, rather than having to go down Main Street because they can't make the corner on First Street. It fixes the retaining wall issue, gets rid of that. We have, the bridge right now, I believe, there was added width for a twelve-foot trail over the town, if you knock that down to four. Narrowing a bridge saves a ton of money, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike?
Correct.
So we narrow that down by four or five, that saves some money. The trail under the bridge that we, we plan on doing is not ADA certified. Is it ADA?
Yeah.
It's going to say that, right? So we, we won't qualify for any trail money for that, because it has to be ADA qualified, so we will pay for that. I don't know if that was two-hundred thousand added expense or not, but pushing bridge north, I think, speaking with Mike, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of like a million dollars added expense. Ballpark, rural rough ballpark, who knows? But if we get the grant money, or the, yeah, the grant money from the state legislature, that's around four-hundred thousand to address First Street. That could potentially be applied to the, the trail under the bridge, that's a couple hundred thousand, the retaining wall fix, that's a couple hundred thousand. We get to the million dollar mark to push the bridge north and fix all these issues really quick, and I still think that we need to work to that. Granted, it might be on our dime to re-engineer that bridge, but the original bid to engineer that bridge is like fifty-six thousand dollars. So I don't know what the goal would be today, but I think that we still need to look at that as an option, it just fixes a lot of issues. I guess, can anybody wants to see it? I still, you know, have to look, you just go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, if there is some desire to do that, what I would suggest is that we try to get all the environmental ballplayers in one room, and just kind of pose it out there and get some feedback from them, and they can give us an idea of how high are we going to have to jump to do that. And I think that, I think we met with them before, but I don't know, sometimes the players change, sometimes attitudes change, and maybe we need to, if there's a desire to do that, maybe we just need to push a little harder.
What do you, do you think, what kind of expense do you think that would take just to get, you know, an hour or two?
You know, I certainly would volunteer my time to get that meeting put together, I mean, if it goes beyond like a day,
Right.
you know, we, you know, want to reconsider that, but I would think a couple-hour meeting with, you know, there're probably going to be a couple of DNR people, fisheries, the hydrology, probably quarter-inch ears. I don't know if we need anything from the watershed, but we probably would invite them as well, so.
And Sterns County, obviously, too.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
And that might be step one, sponsoring of Sterns County.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, well, if the bonding bill passes, we're on the list. If the limits that are proposed are approved, we would be eligible ASAP, but that doesn't mean there won't be another bonding bill in.
And I guess my question now would be is if the bonding bill is approved and the money is allocated, is that money, would that money still apply to, even if we push the bridge north? I mean, it's still fixing the bridge, fixing the deficient bridge?
I think you would have to have it constructed, they may be able to push it back a year from seventeen to eighteen, or.
I, based on my feeling, as well as discussions with the county engineers, that if we were to do that, and we were to redesign and relocate it, we would be reprioritized on their list. I think that's probably the best way to say it, Mike, is that?
Yeah, I, to get on the bridge bonding list, you have to have approved plans, and I think if you essentially unapprove your plans, you're.
Go back to the, the watering line?
Yeah.
So that's the.
I, I don't know how many other sets of plans would come in, I think we were, we were about, right now on the list at about twenty million dollars, twenty-two million. So there's a couple million dollars below us yet that are approved, then a list of pending plans that are in the works, so. list of pending plans that are in the works, so, um, whether we could get on this bonding bill list yet, uh, I'm not sure.
That'd be a pretty poor deal right there, so, or deal, potential deal right here, I guess, whether or not the bonding bill was
Yeah, there's no guarantees.
So what do we do, wait and tell the bonding bill, or wait until our legislature gets done with that bonding bill and see if they approve or not approve, and then
The way that this is drafted right now is to provide consideration to see final plans and engineering based upon the guidance and the public hearings and the processes that we've gone through so far. If we were to, uh, and all the project, you know, the Fifth Avenue Bridge is one that, uh, it's, it's, it's a standalone project, but it feeds into the, uh, retaining wall, as, as Tony, as Tony said, as well as potentially First Street. So the concern is, is that, there's, there's just secondary consequences if, if we delay it, because there's, if the tax bill, we anticipate the tax bill passing this year, and that's a 450,000 dollar contribution that would have to be used by the end of next fiscal year. And so that might change some alignment issues with some other, with the, with the bonding bill. But again, we don't know that until it passes. So if there is a serious consideration to read, to rethink and go back on the 35 meetings that we've had on the, on the retain, on the bridge, um, you, we just, just tell us to do so, and we'll, we'll vary up, and we'll do it. I mean, we'll, we'll have the appropriate staff meetings with the engineers and
Yeah, and I, I don't know if it hurts a lot to have the discussion, with the powers that be, um, get their fifth part, you know, if it, if it goes into, well, now we lost the funding again, we don't want to do that. Right, I'm assuming?
We don't, but we also want to do it right.
Exactly.
Because you're going to do it one time.
Can we pass it, but see if we can do research.
Uh, yeah, we can certainly, uh, you know, put together a proposal for engineering as is. Uh, we can also schedule that meeting with the DNR and the Corps of Engineers, how soon we can get them together. I would hope to do it before the next council meeting. Uh, whether that's possible or not, I'm, I'm not sure. So, uh, we can certainly do that. I, I, I did bring a couple of exhibits. Um, street width was one of the issues that we talked about last time, uh, going to 44-foot wide street, it's currently 38. If there's any, you know, desire to change that right now, uh, as you go to the west further, uh, it changes to 44 feet. Uh, I think based on the additional traffic that we were going to anticipate coming off the, the new bridge with the new intersection, we had looked at widening, uh, the section past City Hall here to 44 feet, trying to get some additional parking on the south side of the street and maximizing the parking on the north side. Um, why don't I just pass these out? We're not looking for any, certainly, decision, but I just, you know, we do have a couple of new council people, and, uh, they'll be able to look at these and maybe just go look at the street, and then by next month, maybe have a, a better idea of what, you know, what was proposed, I think, back in 2014, and, uh, see if everybody is still on board with that.
And this is a nice tool. Uh, Mike and I and the, and the staff here, we, we all got together last week. Gary Mitten Dorff, Mike Creelman, and Dale Lyons, and as well as, uh, Tim Vogel, we sat down and we explored and discussed all of these different scenarios, because we have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity here to look at this, but we really wanted to lay, to lay out all these projects were impacting each other. And this is a real nice clear picture of all these, what this, what this new image is going to look like. And if we get a, a bite on the craft lot, I mean, that's wonderful, and the 400 block at the same time, there's, you know, you're going to have a real opportunity here, so.
Yeah, we had talked about, uh, you know, this, if the break stays the same as it is, and if the roadway stays the same, uh, we have an opportunity on the, uh, used property line of the, the craft lot to push that further west, to give us some more room to flatten out that slope, um, on that, uh, embankment there, to, you know, maybe get it down to a three to one so that people can actually walk down it and use the, use the area a little bit, so. And then the other issues, I guess, that we talked about was, uh, the city lot parking, uh, trying to get some additional parking in there. Uh, we were going to look at redoing, uh, Baker Alley, and I think three years ago, we were looking at an overlay. I think we're probably more looking at a resurfacing, uh, based on that condition. And then, uh, the other addition was sidewalk on the south side of the street, uh, there currently isn't any. Uh, we thought, based on the commercial nature, um, and then, you know, also the potential access to the, the dam for pedestrians, that sidewalk on the south side between Second and, uh, Fourth would be advantageous, so. So I'll take a look at that, and if you have any comments, uh, certainly we can bring them up at, uh, next month's meeting.
Uh, just a quick question on the south side there. It says like sidewalks, who are like Melrose needs to repair, are they going to lose part of their, or even like
Uh, well, the sidewalk is staying within the current right-of-way. I, I think some of those people may be parking right up behind the curb. Technically, they're on city property. Um, they're not going to be losing any of their own parking. Um, I mean, normally, we really don't like them to park in the right-of-way. So, uh, our intentions were on the south side to leave the curb line in the same spot and shift the road to the north to widen it out to the north, so.
So we, this is all contingent now, so if these bills don't pass, Mike, Mike and his team doesn't, don't do this. So, but we'll still have the conversation. If the council, there are some, so, we'll meet with the engine, we'll, Michael, we'll, we'll do that.
I think, I think we should, I'd be, have to attend it, too. Maybe else is interested.
Sure.
So we would need a motion to this effect, and then staff will just coordinate that meeting.
We're approving it, but we're just going to have the conversation, Alex, fair enough.
And, yeah, I guess we can bring it back, take a look, what we're
All right, can you get a motion, please? Can you get a second?
Second.
May I say aye?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. All right, we are on to information items, Utility Commission meeting minutes, EMS week. Thank you to all our, um, people on the ambulance department for all the support community. Schools and conferences, and the sort of government, tax, uh, preparation. Federal Department of Safety Law, records, manager, police secretary. Motion to approve, please?
No, we've got to schedule a meeting for next week, when we determine.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add an FYI, uh, we're going to have the pre-construction conferences for both the Chip Seal Project and the Third Avenue West Project next week on Tuesday. Uh, the Chip Seal is at 9:00 AM, and the Third Avenue Project is at, uh, 10:00 AM here at City Hall. Uh, they anticipate, have told us that they anticipate starting on Third Avenue, probably right after Memorial Day. So that's coming up quick. Uh, the seal code, they're not sure yet. Uh, the weather has kind of delayed them all the way down the line, so we'll have a better idea after we meet with them next week on the Chip Seal schedule, so.
Okay. All right.
I don't think we've motioned, I'm distracted, while we're still in meeting, just what works for, do you say, Mike, again?
We were hoping, this is to, uh, schedule a special meeting of the city council to address the retirement of the police secretary, just because of the timing and, uh, and when we meet as a council, staff would like to have a little bit more time to evaluate what we should do with the police secretary position. So we'd like to schedule a special council meeting next Thursday night, 6:00. We're thinking maybe 15-minute meeting with you based upon our conversations and our discussion.
Well, Chief Moss
We do evaluate at 6:00.
Okay, depending on what this one is, 6:00. Everybody hear the 6?
It shouldn't take that long.
Chief Moss will tell.
Yes, he'll be here. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think everybody's giving us a
Good? So first of it?
This is earlier work, 5:30, maybe?
Do, that'd be motion.
Okay.
6:05.
Okay, all right. We're trying.
All right, good. Anything else?
No.
Good? All right. Can you get a second?
Second.
May I say aye?
Aye.
Vote, carry.